Welcome, everybody. If everybody would please stand so we could do the opening prayer and the pledge of allegiance on the flag.
Oh God, our help and protector, we pray for the victims of mass shootings this week in Louisville, Orlando, Christiana Mall, Houston, Isle of Palms, New Orleans, Philadelphia, and Virginia Beach. And for the victims last week in Jackson, Atlanta, Pueblo, Washington, Moreno Valley, Baltimore, Memphis, and Nashville. For healing for the injured, comfort for their loved ones, and recovery for their communities. We give thanks for the first responders who aid them, and we pray that you empower us in local, state, and federal government to do what must be done to make our communities safe. We ask for your wisdom and governance, your protection for us and our first responders, and your continued care for our community. In your most holy name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Lusher, appreciate that. Okay, starting off tonight on the agenda, we have April 11th before us. Are there any additions, deletions, or corrections to the agenda, council? Okay, hearing none, the chair moves that the agenda be accepted as unanimous consent. Okay, next on the agenda is the minutes of March 26th. We've had them before us. Are there any additions, deletions, or corrections to the minutes, council? Okay, seeing none, hearing none, that the chair moves that the minutes be accepted as unanimous consent. Next is the dispersments of April 4th and April 11th. Council's had a chance to review the dispersments. Are there any additions, deletions, or corrections to the dispersments? Okay, hearing none, the chair moves that the dispersments be accepted as unanimous consent. Okay, so tonight, special night for Talbot Day, we got a proclamation for April 25th. Madam Secretary, could you please read the proclamation into the record?
Proclamation, April 25th, 2023, Talbot Day. Whereas Talbot County, Maryland is a county with over 600 expansive miles of beautiful shoreline and is rooted in rich history, culture, and tradition. And whereas Talbot County is comprised of the five municipalities of Easton, Oxford, Queen Anne, St. Michael's, and Trap, along with numerous unincorporated towns and villages, including Barnett, Bellevue, Bosman, Bruceville, Clayburn, Copperville, Cordova, Fairbank, Ivy Town, Longwoods, McDaniel, Nevet, Newcombe, Royal Oak, Sherwood, Skipton, Tillman, Tunis Mills, Unionville, Williamsburg, Whitman, and Y Mills. And whereas Talbot County citizens are fortunate for the many years of peace and prosperity given to us by God Almighty. And whereas, on April 19th, 1983, the County Council of Talbot County unanimously approved a proclamation declaring April 25th to be the official birthday of Talbot County, and urged its citizens to recognize and commemorate this day in an appropriate manner. And whereas, the County Council is desirous of recognizing and commemorating the county's official birthday on August 25th, 2023, to be a Talbot Day dedicated toward all God's people of Talbot County. And whereas, to enshrine unity to the fabric of our community, we give thanks for all God's blessings He has bestowed upon our community, and to celebrate the county's beauty, history, culture, and tradition. We, the County Council, the Talbot County Council, encourage our community leaders, our school community, our arts community, our faith community, our historical community, our business community, and all Talbot County citizens to recognize and commemorate the county's birthday on April 25th, 2023, in a manner they deem appropriate. Given under our hands and the great seal of Talbot County, Maryland, this 11th day of April in the year of our Lord, 2023.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Okay, is there a motion second to approve the proclamation as presented?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion second, Madam Secretary. Could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Step?
Aye.
Mr. Lusher?
Aye.
Ms. Milkie?
Aye.
Ms. Hayes?
Aye.
Okay, so we'll leave it up to you, Mr. Step.
Thank you, President Callahan.
Special for you, appreciate you doing this.
That is, so this is fulfilling a promise I made at the end of County Council meeting two, two times ago about introducing this Talbot Day. We've just, as a community, as a, as a, as a state, nation, world, have just been through a lot here these last few years, and just looking for an opportunity to, to follow through on a promise of the, this, this 1983 proclamation where they deemed August, April 25th to be the birthday of Talbot County. So just a date to bring unity to Talbot County, we move forward with this proclamation, and we'll follow through with probably going to be a resolution to, to, to make this a permanent day of celebration and just a day of, just recognizing all the blessings that have been bestowed upon us. So, you know, like to thank council for their support and, you know, open it up to, to any others for, for comment.
You're starting with me?
I'm starting with you.
Okay. Now, I just echo what Mr. Step said. I think this is a start to bringing Talbot County together for a day similar to Oxford Day and really celebrating Talbot County. So I look forward to it becoming something huge throughout Talbot County.
It's a start towards being more celebratory about our founding and birth.
Well, Maryland too has recognized its, its birthday as, as Maryland Day every year, ensuring that seems appropriate for us to follow suit.
And I would agree, you've done, you've done a good job to bring this to our attention, and I think that's long overdue, we should have been doing this, that's for sure. Because this, we, we do have a special county. Agreed. And special people too, so, okay. So you want to go ahead and, go ahead and present it?
Absolutely, so typically we have, you know, some, you know, folks who have, you know, if, when initiated a proclamation would be coming up here and speaking to us, but in lieu of that being that, that we were the ones introducing it, I'd like to invite everyone who's in attendance tonight to come on up and be a part of accepting this proclamation. So, please, everyone, come on up.
Please come on up. Yep. Don't rush up here now. Okay, let's get the next one, so get Madam Secretary straight here. Okay, the next one proclamation on the agenda is the Maryland Flood Awareness Month. So, Madam Secretary, could you get, could you go ahead and read that, put that into record for us too, please?
Maryland Flood Awareness Month, April 2023, No Plan Act. Whereas, since 1970, there has been an increase in Atlantic hurricane activity, with the 2020 hurricane season having more named storms than any other hurricane season in recorded history. And whereas, the number of intense storms in rising waters is predicted to increase, particularly in low-lying areas along the Chesapeake Bay and Maryland's waterways. And whereas, weather in the mid-Atlantic region and along the Chesapeake Bay requires Talbot County residents and visitors to take extra precautions to ensure being safe at home during severe weather or while traveling. And whereas, each year floods in Maryland kill more Maryland residents and destroy more property than any other natural hazard. And residents in flood-prone areas should insure their property in the event they experience flooding in and around their home or business. And whereas, flooding from rainbow, rainfall, tropical storms, winter ice melt, and tidal flooding can impact Talbot County, with residents and visitors even experiencing nuisance flooding on blue-sky days in many low-lying areas that require precautions to be taken, especially when traveling. And whereas, in order for Talbot County residents to remain vigilant and resilient, they're encouraged to always be up to date on weather forecasts, know the risk, make a plan, and be ready to act on the plan. Now therefore, we, the County Council of Talbot County, do hereby recognize April 2023 as Flood Awareness Month in Maryland, and encourage communities to observe this week with appropriate programs, outreach, and activities. Given under our hands and the great seal of Talbot County, this 11th day of April in the year of our Lord, 2023.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Is there a motion?
I will move for the proclamation.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion second. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote, please?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Step?
Aye.
Mr. Lusher?
Aye.
Ms. Milkie?
Aye.
Ms. Hayes?
Aye.
Okay, all right. How you doing, guys? How you doing?
Counsel, thank you. Thank you for your support of Flood Awareness Month.
Absolutely.
My name is Bryce Yelton, I'm a planner too with the Talbot County Department of Planning and Zoning. I manage the development projects and review building permits within the regulated flood zones in Talbot County in compliance with our floodplain ordinance. This review allows us to stay in compliance with the National Flood Insurance Program, and I also manage our Community Rating System program. This allows us to provide a discount to our residents with flood insurance within the unincorporated areas of Talbot County. April is Flood Awareness Month, and Talbot County is joining the statewide effort to educate residents about flood risk and flood insurance. Flooding is the most common and costly natural hazard in the United States, and anywhere it can rain, it can flood. We urge that residents not be caught off guard and to plan now for potential flooding. One of the most important steps residents can take to prepare today is to obtain flood insurance. Flood insurance, whether it's through the National Flood Insurance Program or private carrier, allows individuals, businesses, and communities to quickly and sufficiently recover after a flood. Most homeowners and renters insurance policies do not cover damages caused by flooding. Just one inch of water in a home can cause up to $25,000 in damages, according to the Federal Emergency Management Agency, or FEMA. Flood insurance can mean the difference between recovering and being financially devastated. Talbot County participates in the National Flood Insurance Program, or the NFIP, which means all of our residents are eligible for flood insurance, even if they don't live in a high-risk flood zone. Flood insurance policies take a minimum of 30 days to go into effect, and as such, it is important to plan ahead and consider coverage options well in advance of a disaster. Contact an insurance agent or visit floodsmart.gov for further details. Thank you again, counsel, and then I would like to at least, you know, say a little bit about what we've been doing recently within the Department of Planning and Zoning about our CRS program. Our office has really stepped up in our involvement with our Community Rating Service Program, or CRS program. I personally have recently received my Certified Floodplain Manager certification, and this allows us to gain points within that CRS program and potentially increase our rating within that program. We're committed to at least increasing our CRS rating from a level seven to a level six in the next two years. And this would increase the already 15% discount on flood insurance premiums to an additional 5%, which would be a total of 20% discount to all of those that have premiums for flood insurance within the NFIP, within the unincorporated areas of Talbot County. I also urge our county residents that are unsure of their flood risk to reach out to our office with any questions they might have. The county also has pamphlets and can assist those with floodplain questions at our office at 215 Bay Street. And if any members of the community would like to stop by during our normal, normal business hours, I'd love to speak with them if they had any questions.
Sounds great.
Brennan? Good evening, counsel.
Yep.
Brennan Tarleton, Planning Officer for the Department of Planning and Zoning. I just want to do again, recognize Bryce Yelton and congratulate him on receiving his CFM certification for us. That's certainly a great achievement, and it's, it's great to have somebody in our office certified within that program so that we can continue our participation and continue to provide those incentives for the community themselves. And I'd also like to echo a lot of the points Bryce made about the awareness factor as far as flood risk and flood management go with respect to gaining insurance, but also the continued partnership that we have with emergency services and their staff and the assistance that they provide the community as a whole is a direct impact on how we can help others to become more aware of those situations and understand who they need to contact, who they need to get in touch with when situations like that happen. As we continue, continue to see an increase in sea level rise and severity of storms, it's very important and imperative that that collaborative effort between us and the Emergency Services Department continues throughout to ensure that Talbot County has offered the best technical assistance and physical assistance in situations like that.
I agree, I agree. Counsel?
Oh, my, my turn, okay. I just want to thank you guys for certainly doing the work of making our community aware of the resources. And again, congratulations on your certification because that certainly adds value to the department and the work that you do. So, thank you, both of you.
Thank you for the notice to the community about resources and the need to address these issues.
Well, I think that our community is becoming more aware of, of tidal flooding hazards in a number of our communities and seeing, seeing incidences of nuisance flooding that pretend worse when, when the storm surge comes. So, we've, we've got work to do on a number of fronts here.
And just, just to you both, thank you for, for bringing this to our attention. It's certainly something that we all as residents need to be aware of. Thank you for all your behind-the-scenes work. I'd also like to take the opportunity, so Geneva and Brian are here sitting in the back. Just specifically Geneva, I'd like to thank you for sending out your emails that you do to let residents know. You know, the, the reverse 911 service, I think it'd be an, an opportunity time here to bring that up. So if you haven't signed up for that, it's wonderful, comes right to your phone, text message, phone call, that tells you when there's an event locally to, to your area. So thank you for the work you, you both are doing as well, as well as your team, so thank you all.
Yep, and we really appreciate you getting certified, that's, that's for sure, so that makes a big difference. So, you want to, you want to come on down? Okay, next on the agenda is Sexual Harassment Month?
Assault.
Assault, I'm sorry. Sexual assault awareness for, for this month. Madam Secretary, would you, would you mind reading this into the record, please?
Sexual Assault Awareness Month, April 2023. Whereas, sexual violence is widespread and impacts everyone, including families, homes, schools, and workplaces. And whereas, Sexual Assault Awareness Month aims to raise public awareness about sexual violence and to educate communities about how to prevent it. And whereas, rape, sexual assault, and sexual harassment harm our community and carry a tremendous emotional and financial cost leading to long-term physical and psychological health problems, including chronic pain, anxiety, post-traumatic stress disorder, and sexually transmitted diseases. And whereas, nationwide, 81% of women and 43% of men report having experienced some form of sexual harassment and/or assault in their lifetime. And whereas, the theme of this year's Sexual Assault Awareness Month campaign focuses on equity and respect, calling on all individuals, communities, organizations, and institutions to understand disparities and to change the systems in order to improve equity and respect within communities. And whereas, in the United States, 29% of black women report having been raped in their lifetime, 35% of Hispanic women report being the recipient of unwanted sexual contact in their lifetime, 33% of adults with intellectual disabilities have experienced sexual violence, and 47% of all transgender people report having been sexually assaulted in their lifetime. And whereas, working together to educate, speak out, and prevent sexual assault in our communities is the best gift we can give to survivors and their children, and prevention is possible when everyone gets involved. And whereas, Talbot County supports the professionals who work to identify and prevent sexual violence and is dedicated to providing services and alternative avenues for survivors to seek proper care and treatment. And whereas, Sexual Assault Awareness Month, and every day of the year, is an opportunity to stand with survivors, to celebrate progress in combating sexual assault crimes, and to recommit to reducing sexual violence in Talbot County. Now therefore, we, the County Council of Talbot County, do hereby recognize April as Sexual Assault Awareness Month in Talbot County and call this observance to the attention of all our citizens. Given under our hands and the great seal of Talbot County, this 11th day of April in the year of our Lord, 2023.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Is there a motion?
So move.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion second, Madam Secretary, could you call the vote, please?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Step?
Aye.
Mr. Lusher?
Aye.
Ms. Milkie?
Aye.
Ms. Hayes?
Aye.
Good evening.
Thank you.
We've got some guests tonight, would you like to tell us who you guys are?
Sure.
Yeah.
My name is Katie Tiki, and I'm Vice President of Marketing and Communications at For All Seasons.
Okay.
And I am Susan Alstrom, I am the Tamar Coordinator at For All Seasons.
Okay.
Tamar, Tamar stands for Trauma Addiction Mental Health and Recovery.
Okay.
And for anyone here who doesn't know about the work of For All Seasons, For All Seasons is your community behavioral health and rape crisis center. And we offer therapy, psychiatry, advocacy, victim services, and education and outreach in the community. And we are one of 17 rape crisis centers across the state of Maryland. We serve the mid-shore community, so we serve nearly 200,000 residents. And our rape crisis advocates do a lot of work behind the scenes. We unfortunately do have a lot of survivors that come to see us. They visit people in the hospital in the middle of the night, we have 24-hour crisis hotlines. They go to court appointments, and they go to the police station, and they accompany survivors. So the work they do is really critical. And we appreciate the opportunity just to bring it to the public because it's not something we really love to talk about. But I think it's safe to say that everybody in this room, on some level, has probably been affected by sexual assault, sexual harassment, sexual violence, abuse, abuse as a child. And it might not be you, but it might be someone you know, it might be a sister, or a friend, or a cousin, or another family member. And so we think that it's really important to talk about because in the absence of talking about it, what are we saying to the people who have been victims of this crime? So we are pleased to bring this today, and we just wanted to give a few tips. If you are somebody who gets approached by someone who shares their story with you, listen to them, believe them. Let them know it's not their fault, and let them know about the resources that are in the community. For All Seasons, the best way to reach us is through forallseasonsinc.org. We do have 24-hour crisis hotlines, our English crisis hotline is 410-820-5600, and our Spanish-speaking crisis hotline is 410-829-6143. But reach out to folks who are struggling and connect them with the resources. We also have the statewide resources on our website, so if it's somebody who's not local, they can find those there, so thank you. I would also add about Tamar.
Yeah.
As the Tamar Coordinator, I work with our local detention centers, and the majority, if not all, of the women in the detention centers that I work with have experienced some form of sexual abuse. And so it's really important that we are here today, and we're really grateful. So thank you for giving us this opportunity to be here.
Thank you for being here. Mr. Step?
No, I'll just echo that, that thanks one more time, just for, thank you for all the work that you do for, for victims. Thanks to those who are, you know, working in, in tandem alongside you in our, our local law enforcement for the prevention piece, and our county law enforcement with, with their piece, our first responders, folks who need to see the, the firsthand aftermath of such events. And I'd like to thank everyone for, for what they do towards bringing this down to zero. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for the work you're doing, both to identify and to prevent this, this form of violence and, and do let us know what we can do in the communities to support your good work in the community.
Thank you for being here. I've been around enough to remember when you first opened the doors of For All Seasons in a little office across the parking lot of the law firm where I worked. And to see the progress the organization has made over the years has just been phenomenal. And so it's with great pleasure that I would support this and all the work that you do in protecting victims and helping them recuperate. Thank you.
So I echo everything that's been said. The work that you do at For All Seasons is amazing. Coming before us this evening to share resources and make sure that we are making the citizens of Talbot County aware of what you have to offer and how they can get the necessary help that they need if they are a victim of such assault. We greatly appreciate it, and best of luck on your expansion, which is a good thing because you're growing, so that's always good. But you have an awesome CEO there with Beth Ann, and all of you ladies and everyone that works there are awesome and a value to our community.
So if I can add one more note regarding the expansion, we have just been granted a, a grant from the governor for addressing human trafficking, and we will be implementing a human trafficking navigator position and helping to implement protocol and procedures to address and prevent human trafficking and covering five counties in the mid-shore area. And we are very honored and excited to be involved in that work. So again, I think For All Seasons is stepping up to be present and help in this regard. And I would like to add, we're already doing a lot of that human trafficking work, we're actually... We're actually seeing several human trafficking victims as we speak right now. Does happen in our community. So, this goes through the Rape Crisis Center, but you will be seeing more information come out in the public and more awareness for everyone about what we can do to identify trafficking victims and help report it.
Well, thanks so much for helping Talbot County and being there twenty... That's a big deal, twenty-four seven, for you being there. So, we can't thank you enough. So, Mrs. Hay, you want to?
I have it.
Yep, come on up if you'd like. Okay, next, Ray, you want to come on up? You and Mike? Okay, next on the agenda is a presentation of revised priority list of Maryland Department of Transportation. And Mr. Clark, you're going to bring us up to speed on that.
Sure thing. Counsel, yeah, I think at our last meeting, we talked with you about the priority list to state highways. And pretty much, you know, our number one priority was basically Maryland Route three-twenty-two and US fifty intersections north. And, you know, ultimately, I think, you know, I can go through the list again if you like for the public. Or I can, you know, I did talk to the towns, you know, after we had met two weeks ago. And I did get information from each of the towns other than Queen Anne's. I'm still reaching out to Queen Anne's to find out what priority listings they would like to have added. So, that's something I'm working on. But we did get, we did receive information from the town of Easton. I would say our priority is number five, A, B, and C, which are basically intersection improvements. And I think they were also identifying some intersection improvements at US Route fifty, three-twenty-eight, Gold Road Street, as well as Dover Street, Route three-thirty-one and US fifty. And then, US Route fifty and Chapel intersection improvements. They also identified that in their listing of projects as well. My recommendation would be to continue to have both sets of projects, you know, those for the county as well as the town. But yeah, other than that, I mean, any questions you all might have on the listing or?
Mike?
Um, yeah, just what Ray says. I think, you know, there's a certain logic to, even though some of them are a little redundant, keep saying it. So, it might be a worthwhile effort. Just go ahead and keep them both.
It's a pleasure. I want to thank you for responding and for reaching out to the towns and using this opportunity to, both for that communication between the county and the municipalities and to lend our combined voice in advocating for these issues to the state. I think that that speaks well for our community and our local government's ability to work together in community these priorities to the state.
Perfect example of how, you know, local government should work upwards and hear the direct concerns from the towns, the counties, everything. So, thank you both.
And once I, I mean, what we will do is I'll be trying to reach out to Mr. Starkey with the town of Queen Anne's to try and find out what projects they have.
Okay.
At the same time, you know, just, you know, one comment I would make is like for the town of Trap, they don't have anything at this point in time listed. We may want to note that, you know, the SHA, even though they don't have a project list, it should reach out to them, you know, at some point in the future. So, this is not like a one-and-done kind of concept, you know, that hopefully, you know, they can make that communication with them. And I also recommend doing the same for the town of Queen Anne's if we don't have anything for them as well.
Okay.
I concur about the value of working with municipalities and how important it is for all of us to, the county and the towns, to be on the same page on many, many issues. So, thank you for the work and keep it up.
I think we all will agree and concur with the same thing, that, you know, kudos to you, Ray, and Mike for certainly reaching out to the towns because I think as a council, that's exactly, you know, that's what we said we wanted to happen, you know, when we were elected and sitting here. So, that coordination and that communication, us, you know, working with them side by side and not top-down approach. So, thank you for that.
And we'll continue that.
Okay, being that said, Madam Secretary, is there a motion?
I'll move to approve.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion second. Could you call the vote, please?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Step?
Aye.
Mr. Lusher?
Aye.
Ms. Milkie?
Aye.
Ms. Hay?
Aye.
Okay, that's great.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you guys. Okay, next, next on the agenda is introduction of a numbered resolution. Madam Secretary, could you go ahead and read that into the record, please?
A resolution to amend the nine-one-one fee for Talbot County, Maryland by increasing the fee from seventy-five cents per month to a dollar and fifty cents per month.
Okay. You want to come on up? Yeah? Mr. Thomas, you want to go ahead and get us started on that while he's coming up?
Sure, so the state law authorizes counties to impose a nine-one-one fee in amount to cover the county's projected operational costs for its nine-one-one system for the upcoming fiscal year. And it can increase this if the revenues from the current year aren't sufficient to meet the operating costs. This fee has been raised, has been in place and raised several times. It was most recently set at seventy-five cents per month in two thousand and four. So, it's now necessary to bump that up to a dollar fifty per month as proposed in the resolution.
Okay, Ray, thank you. Brian, you want to tell the public a little bit about this?
Sure. Good evening, Counsel. Brian O'Kates, Director of Talbot County Emergency Services. So, this would be a fee increase to, on every telephone bill. So, whether it's wireless or landline, there's a fee attached to cover nine-one-one services in the state of Maryland. Part of that fee, fifty cents, goes to the state and the other portion comes to Talbot County or whatever county the phone is registered to. So, that fee offsets some of the costs to the nine-one-one centers. As Mr. Thomas said, we haven't had a fee increase since two thousand and four, so some nineteen years. We have, we've gone without a fee increase. It's, looking through the records, it's time that we should probably bring that up to better cover the costs of what it takes to run a nine-one-one center these days, so.
Okay. Any questions?
Yeah.
Okay, yep, go ahead.
Mr. Hay, as, when we were going over this in budget work sessions, I understand that while this fee will be going up, it still is, it still is not sufficient to cover the costs of nine-one-one. There still is general government fees, general government revenues from income tax, from property tax that will be paying for this service. This will simply increase the direct offset that we get from this, from the cell phone tax, the phone tax. I guess it goes to landlines as well as cell phones.
Yes, sir, that is correct. So, I think we, forgive me, I don't have the exact numbers in front of me, but I think it was around thirty percent right now is covered in nine-one-one fees. By raising it, it would bring it to somewhere around forty to forty-five percent. That would be coming from fees. The rest of it would be coming from general county dollars to offset the cost of nine-one-one.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, is there a raise of hands to introduce?
So, by counsel?
Okay. Madam Secretary, could you go ahead and announce the number in the public hearing and the time?
This will be known as Resolution three forty-one. And the public hearing will be held on Tuesday, April twenty-fifth at six-thirty P.M.
Okay, great.
Thank you, Counsel.
Brian, I appreciate it.
And if I could, while I'm here, could I just take the time to mention that it is National Telecommunicators Week? So, that is what commonly referred to as Dispatcher's Week, but the official name is National Telecommunicators Week from the ninth to the fifteenth. So, we're currently celebrating all of our dispatch folks that do a great job for us every day down at the nine-one-one center. So, our law enforcement partners and other agencies have been recognizing throughout the week with different food and goodies. But I did want to take the time to at least say that while I was here.
Okay, thanks, Brian. Thank you. Appreciate all you do.
Thank you.
Yep. Okay, next on the agenda, Madam Secretary, you want to go ahead and read the next one?
A resolution concerning the proposed annexation by the town of Easton, Maryland, the town of certain real property located on the north side of Port Street at Easton Point, consisting of four-point-seven-four-three acres of land and zero-point-one-five-six acres of land, more or less, collectively, the properties. Finding that the property's proposed rezoning from Talbot County's limited industrial, L.I. zoning, to the town's mixed-use waterfront, M.X.W. zoning, upon their annexation will result in substantially different uses or substantially higher density exceeding fifty percent than could be granted for proposed development under the county's L.I. zoning and waiving the five-year hold in accordance with Section four dash four-one-six of the Local Government Article of the Annotated Code of Maryland.
Okay, thank you, Madam Secretary. Mr. Thomas, you want to go ahead and bring us up to speed on that one, too?
Sure, so the town of Easton has introduced legislation to annex certain real property at Easton Point. The property is currently, it's in the county, it's currently zoned, limited industrial under the county zoning. And the town, upon its annexation, wants to zone it mixed-use waterfront, which would result in substantially different uses or higher density than could be granted under the county zoning. So, Section four, four-sixteen of the Local Government Article requires the county to grant a waiver from the five-year zoning hold in order for them to apply that zoning classification of the property.
Great, good, good. Is there anybody here from the town that wants to come up and speak about that? Okay, all right, so show a raise of hands that we want to introduce this.
So, by counsel?
Madam Secretary, would you like to go ahead and give us a number and tell us the time and date?
This will be known as Resolution three forty-two. And the public hearing will be on Tuesday, May ninth, at six-thirty P.M.
Okay, I appreciate that. Okay. All right, pretty much on time. The next is a public hearing. Okay, Madam Secretary, could you go ahead and read for the record the Resolution three thirty-eight, please?
Resolution three thirty-eight. A resolution to amend the Talbot County Comprehensive Water and Sewer Plan for consistency with discharge permit number nineteen D.P. three-four-six-zero issued by the Maryland Department of the Environment on October twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-two and to require that any future expansion of the new Lakeside Wastewater Treatment Plant should require an amendment to the Comprehensive Water and Sewer Plan.
Okay, thank you, Madam Secretary. Mr. Thomas?
Yes, so this resolution was requested by Councilmember Milkie. This would make the Comprehensive Water and Sewer Plan consistent with the discharge permit that M.D.E. issued in October for the new Lakeside Wastewater Treatment Plant and also require an amendment to the plan for any future expansion of that.
Okay, all right.
Do you want to bring up Mr. Clark? Do you want to bring up Mr. Clark?
Yep, yep.
I just wanted to give you a heads up.
Yep.
At the April fifth Planning Commission meeting, they decided to table Resolution three-three-eight. And ultimately, they'll be looking to take that up at their May third meeting for, I guess, review and consistency with the comp plan. So, I just want to let the council know. So, if you have, after the public, or ask the council to keep the public hearing open until the Planning Commission has had the opportunity to review.
Sure, okay.
Thank you.
So, we're going to keep it open, so it is a public hearing. So, at this time, I'm going to go ahead and open it up. So, on this side over here, would anybody like to come up and speak? Okay. Yes, yep, come on up.
Mr. Callahan, Mr. President?
Yes.
Members of council, my name is William Anderson. I live at two-one-seven-one-five Heavenly Haven Road in Sherwood. And I am, serve on your Public Works Advisory Board as chairman.
Yes.
The Public Works Advisory Board had before Resolution three thirty-eight at its last meeting. And as Mr. Clark will report to you, I believe, in due course, the three of us present voted in favor of recommending that the council adopt Resolution three thirty-eight. I wanted to make you aware, however, that at the time of that vote, we were not informed of the current non-compliant status of the construction that is ongoing at Lakeside. And we were not aware of the additional violations by the town's existing wastewater treatment plant at Lakeside. Excuse me. Or since the additional homes in Lakeside have been connected, as construction has progressed, there have been additional violations of the wastewater treatment permit at the existing plant. We did not know that at the time. Had we known that, I'm not sure that the vote would have come out the same way. And I wanted to make you aware of those violations. They were brought to light in a comment that was filed by the Chop Tank Riverkeeper with the Planning Commission last week. And that's the first we learned of it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else on this side would like to speak? Yep, come on up.
I'm John Sullivan. I am a recent Commissioner for Town Trap. But I have lived in Trap for twenty years. And when I first moved there, this whole Lakeside thing was just getting started. And we looked at it and we listened to all the plans and everything else, and we voted to do it. And then, basically, the housing market collapsed. So, nothing happened for all these years. And now, we're finally getting back on track, it seems. And my question is very simple. Why do you think you need to do this resolution? I mean, what preempted this to come about? I understood what the gentleman said about, you know, we're not doing enough with our wastewater treatment. You know, that's easy enough to find out. We have figures, we have engineers that, you know, test our water systems daily. You know, if there's a problem, it should have been addressed before it got to this point. Why let, you know, a problem like that at a wastewater treatment plant hold up an entire development? And I mean, they're not even close to being finished with their wastewater treatment plant. They're in the process, they're just getting started, really. We haven't even finalized the final plans for it. They're just getting some preliminary things done. So, I just don't see what the sense is of putting a major roadblock in that's just going to inhibit anything that we can do in a positive way.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
If anybody can give me that simple answer, I'd love it.
Well, this is sort of your time to express your concerns. It's really not our time to address that, that's all. And anything, anything that you feel like you want to write down and submit to us, then we can, we can answer you. Okay, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, Jess?
Yes.
Did we have a sign-up sheet?
Not for this.
Not, no, it didn't. Okay, all right, no problem. Okay, anybody else on this side? Okay, okay, just shift over to this side. Anybody like to come up and talk about three thirty-eight? Yep, come on up.
Good evening, council members. Nice to see you. Tom Allspock, speaking for Talbot Conservation Alliance. Let me say first that we commend Ms. Milkie for putting this resolution up for discussion. It raises some important points. And the most important point and first point I would like to make is that it is not intended to be a roadblock. What this resolution tries to do is exactly what a number of your predecessors said should happen back in the fall when the M.D.E. permit was issued. And the M.D.E. did not afford the developer the full five-hundred-and-forty-thousand-gallon-per-day allotment that they sought. As you know, they only gave them a portion of that, a hundred thousand gallons per day. And the purpose of that was so that there could be ongoing review over time as this massive project plays out. And from the council's point of view, as it affects county residents who live adjacent to the property or live on Trap Creek or live anywhere in the county and will be affected by this development. So, what this, what this resolution attempts to do is to have a continuing opportunity... So, what this, what this resolution attempts to do is to have a continuing opportunity for the county, each time a requested initial additional expansion is brought to bear for an additional hundred thousand gallons per day, to look again at how the project, how the project has been working out in reality, and what effect it may be having on county residents. And that's all it is. It's not, it's not an attempt to reverse what's been granted, or delay it, or block it, or anything of that nature, it's to provide this county council with the oversight that they should have when a project of this magnitude is in play that is going to have this tremendous effect, not just on Trap, but on all your constituents in the county. Now, I'm glad the record's going to stay open, because I think there are a few small tweaks that could be done to three thirty-eight to enhance its effectiveness without, again, without prejudicing the developer. For example, the, the number of units that can be connected to the existing Trap plant has been the biggest issue in connection with this project from the beginning, largely because of the problems with the existing plant. There is not enough clarity in either two eighty-one of the existing resolution, or, for that matter, in three thirty-eight, as to how many units actually can be connected to the existing plant, and for how long. Indeed, two eighty-one implies they can be connected until the thing is completely built out, and only at that point will they be required to redirect their flow to the new plant if required to do so by the kind of Trap. That should be, that's inconsistent with what MDE intended and what this council, I believe, understood. There are some other aspects of this that I think are significant, and I won't take your time, because I know my time is very limited, but I, I would appreciate the opportunity to present a couple of very small suggestions in writing for your consideration, and ask that they might be considered before you close the record. And I understood from the comments at the outset, the record's going to stay open now until the Plan Commission.
Yes, sir.
But overall, again, my, my primary point is that this resolution should not be viewed as a means of blocking this project. It's a means of having this council have a, have continuing oversight over the next thirty years, is what they project, as a project plays out, when it's a project that clearly is going to affect your constituents in Talbot County, well beyond the boundaries of the Town Trap. I think it's important for the county to reserve the right to look as, look how things are going as the project progresses along, so there can be remediation along the way if necessary. That's what the resolution is trying to do.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it. Yep. Okay. Yep.
My name is John Thacker, and I live about three miles from the Lakeside Development, sort of between the towns of Oxford and Trap. I've actually visited the, the Lakeside Development and toured the new homes, and they are very handsome homes, and it'll be a nice addition to the development, to the, to the community of Trap. But I have to agree with everything that was just said by the prior gentleman, that this is going to be a long-term build-out of this project. It's going to have significant effects, not only on the environment and the waters, but also on the schools, on emergency response, resources, on healthcare resources, everything. And as this project unfolds, it's imperative that the county be at the table as far as reviewing the, the development, the effects it's having on the community and the county, and all of the citizens of the county, and make sure that as it is rolling out, that whatever provisions are appropriate to either control or enhance the, the safety, both environmental safety as well as community safety, become part of the, the approvals. So, again, not intending at all to put up roadblocks, but just want the county to have a seat at the table over the next thirty years when this project rolls out. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay. Yep.
Mr. President, members of council, my name is Alan Gerard, one one four, South Washington Street, representing the Chesapeake Bay Foundation today. We absolutely support this resolution in concept. It, as the other speakers have said, gives the county important oversight over this thirty-year-plus project. You know, the, the resolution itself does connect council's ability to amend the Comprehensive Water and Sewer Plan with the state discharge permit. We believe there is opportunity to improve the language in that area, to be specific about the number of gallons, the number of homes that would trigger such an opportunity for council to provide that oversight through amendment to the plan. So, possible modifications I would urge you to consider during the public hearing process. But in concept, the idea of oversight for such a large consequential project for this county is spot-on and something that the council should pursue. We have heard, as you have, a lot of concern from residents, our members in particular, saying that such oversight is important. In fact, that urging of our members urged us to write the former council no less than three times about this idea of periodic incremental review of the project. On February twentieth, we requested, of twenty twenty, we requested council to require sewer service area reclassification for each phase of development. On January twenty-first of twenty twenty, we wrote council, asking council to update the sewer plan to include only the first five phases of development, and consider additional updates for each new phase based on currently available information. And then, we wrote council again on February fourth, twenty twenty-two, requesting that council provide for the orderly expansion and extension of sewage and other systems as required by state statute. So, that periodic incremental review, certainly something that our members want, certainly something that you have heard from a number of speakers tonight and others. So, we urge for you to look at three thirty-eight with potential amendments in mind to ensure that the oversight that you are seeking with the resolution, you succeed at delivering with some precise language that'll help you to do that. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Right. Anybody else on, on Alan's side like to speak? Yeah?
Mr. President, members of the council, Ryan Showalter, on behalf of Trap East Holdings Business Trust. A couple of brief comments. The first is, I want to be very clear, I think we've been clear on the record repeatedly before, but it was suggested that there's confusion about how many units can connect to the existing town plant under Resolution two eighty-one and the capacity agreement that exists between the Lakeside Developer and the Town of Trap. That is one hundred and twenty units. Yeah, I, I don't, I think the agreement's been clear, it's been repeatedly said in this room, and that initial connection, the flows from those units, is necessary to start, to commission and start the operation of the treatment plant. So, the, the new Lakeside DNR treatment plant is under construction. We anticipate construction will be completed approximately this time next year. There, there's no confusion about when the flow to the existing town treatment plant will stop, because it will stop as soon as the new treatment plant is available to receive it. It needs to receive those flows to start the biological process to begin operating. So, just so that there's no confusion for anyone, the, the town plant will receive flow from the existing homes for approximately twelve more months. As soon as the new plant is ready to receive that, the pump station will redirect one hundred percent of that flow to the new plant, so it can be commissioned and operated. The, the second point is, if, if you look at the, the history of Talbot County's use of the Comprehensive Water and Sewer Plan, it, it clearly has been used in this county as a, a growth management tool and a roadblock. And if, if Talbot County had a, a water and sewer plan that was administered as an infrastructure planning tool, like many other counties, and, and you had routine amendments, those amendments related to infrastructure and were granted with, with diligence and speed, this concept might be something that's, that's worth talking about. If, if you look at the history of Resolution two eighty-one, those discussions started and then were concluded with, you know, a reconsideration over the period of three years. If, if the county wants a seat at the table, and that seat at the table, you know, will take three-plus years for the county to deliberate and discuss, and then potentially act on or deny, it absolutely isn't a roadblock and an impediment, and for that reason, it's not something that we can support. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anybody over here? Okay, all right. So, what we're going to do, we're going to go ahead and leave the public, we're going to leave it open. Okay? I'm sorry.
Do you want to set a date to leave the record open until?
It's going to take, it's going to take a few weeks.
Next meeting?
Okay, next meeting, that's fine.
Next meeting, April twenty-fifth?
Is that, is that what you want to do?
Do you want to, well, that will be, the, 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 the,[1380.58] meeting, and then will we be able to report the decision of the Public Works Advisory Board to the planning commission? And then we'd have to do the same thing to keep the record open.
Keep it open.
Until May ninth, until after the planning commission meeting.
Okay, but then they're not meeting to the end of the month.
The, the Public Works Advisory Board is meeting actually May twentieth, but then the, the planning commission doesn't meet until May third, so we're, we're starting.
April twenty, I'm sorry, April, I apologize, April, April twenty. Sorry, I thought you meant April, I wasn't sure.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, that's good. Okay. Mr. Thomas, did you want to say anything, or?
No, I don't have anything other than stat.
You're good? Okay. Okay, so we'll, we'll open it. So on, on this side, does anybody want to come on up and talk about three thirty-nine? Resolution three thirty-nine. Okay? Switch over to this side, anybody'd like to come over, come on up and talk about three thirty-nine? Okay, so just like Mr. Clark said, we'll go ahead and keep, keep that record open. And we're gonna keep it open to May, a little.
May ninth.
May ninth, yep. Okay. Okay. All right, all right, now we're, Madam Secretary, we're on our last resolution, which would be three forty. If you could go ahead and read that into the record, that'd be great.
Resolution number three forty, a resolution to formally accept the offer from Trips Creek LLC to dedicate Jennings Road to public use as a public county road, said road being more particularly shown and designated as Jennings Road, fifty-foot public right way, right way on a plat entitled Lot Line Abandonment and Final Subdivision Plat and FCP two thousand one dash oh eight Swaniger Farm at Cook's Hope in the first election district, Talbot County, Maryland, tax map forty-two, grids sixteen and twenty-two, parcel seven, twenty-one to two hundred and fifteen, dated April twenty-second, two thousand and two, revised through September fifth, two thousand and six, and recorded among the plat records of Talbot County, Maryland in LIBER MAS number eighty-two, page forty-two, and to accept fee simple title to the same for no consideration.
Okay, Madam Secretary, once again, we're gonna go ahead and open it to the public. Yeah, yeah, come on up, Ray, yep.
Again, this is, this is a road that was constructed probably about fifteen years ago. The county did take over maintenance, so this is basically putting, officially taking over with the county council.
Gotcha.
Accepting this.
Okay, that sounds great. Okay, it's like, anybody'd like to come up? Yeah, come on up, Zach.
Good evening, Council, Zach Smith on behalf of Trips Creek LLC, the developer of the Swaniger Farm subdivision, and just here to speak in favor of resolution three forty. The road was always intended to be a public road, is built as a public road, as Ray indicated. The county has taken over for maintenance, all consistent with the approval. There is a condition on the plat, the approved plat for the project that says the road right away here on Shown as Jennings Road shall be deeded to Talbot County, and we're simply trying to comply with that requirement. It's really a housekeeping item, just to avoid any title confusion down the road, but for those reasons, we would support and ask the council to support the acceptance of the road.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Anybody on, on my left here? Okay, anybody here on, on my right? Yeah, come on up.
Members of the council, Ryan Showalter, reside at two eight eight nine zero Jennings Road, and I was gonna point out the, the plat note that Mr. Smith already read to you. So it, it's been maintained by the county as long as I've lived there, it, it has far more lots than a private road, and urge you to accept it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Okay. Read it this time. Is there a motion?
You want, uh, close the public?
Yeah, we want to close the, the public hearing on this.
Well, with, with that, I will, um, I will move, I'll move resolution three forty-two to the vote.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, okay, we got a motion second to move three forty to a vote. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Step?
Aye.
Mr. Lusher?
Aye.
Ms. Milky?
Aye.
Ms. Hay?
Aye.
Okay. All right, Madam Secretary, next on the list is reading of a bill on fifteen twenty-eight.
Bill number fifteen twenty-eight, a bill to amend chapter one ninety of the Talbot County Code, zoning, subdivision, and land development, sections one ninety dash fifteen, critical area overlay, one ninety twenty-five point two, table of land uses, one ninety dash thirty-one marine uses, one ninety dash thirty-three accessory uses, one ninety dash fifty non-conforming structures, one ninety dash fifty-eight point two minor variances, and one ninety dash seventy-eight terms defined regarding erosion control measures, piers, and riparian structures.
Good evening, Council. For the record, Brennan Tarleton, planning officer with the Department of Planning and Zoning. Before you, for bill fifteen twenty-eight, this is an amendment that's actually been in the works for several years now within the department, as well as the applicant and several other concerned citizens or parties that have been privy to the regulations currently. In working with the applicant, staff has had several internal meetings regarding some of the language and the proposed changes that have included some of the additional changes that we had also liked to see for clerical matters within the sections regarding piers and riparian structures. The applicant first submitted the official text amendment application to our department in June of two thousand and twenty-two. It was later heard and considered by the planning commission in their July of two thousand and twenty-two meeting. There was considerable discussion in that meeting, and the planning commission did replace additional amendments and edits to the language that was included. From there, the applicant was given direction to make some of those amendments and return to the planning commission for additional consideration. They made those amendments, staff reviewed the amendments and considered them to be relatively in line and consistent with what the planning commission had requested. That application was then forwarded back to the planning commission for consideration in their December of two thousand and twenty-two meeting, and then further forwarded for consideration to their January of two thousand and twenty-three meeting for several minor housekeeping items and changes in verbiage and language to be completed before actually voting on the application. And in that January of two thousand and twenty-three meeting, they provided a positive recommendation via five-zero vote for you all for a favorable approval of the amended language included within this bill. If you'd like, I know it does cover quite a few of the sections of the code, if you'd like, I can give you a brief overview of some of the major changes and highlight those within the text, given the fact that it is very long. Also, I believe the applicant's here to represent several of those changes as well, so if there's more in-depth questions later on in this discussion, I'd be happy to come back up and answer or clarify any of those as well. So just to begin, some of the major changes and highlights to these are the suggestion of permitting the allowance for the addition of shoreline control measures and structures above the mean high water line. So that would be additional permanent disturbance and structures within the critical area development buffer to combat shoreline erosion measures. This language would have to be referred to the critical area for their review and consideration of that because it would be permanent disturbance in the critical area buffer. So that's one of the major highlighted changes within the critical area section of the code as you see it. Next, moving on to the pier requirements, there's permitance by special exception to allow for two residential piers to exist on a property, with additional stipulations being that the property would need to be in excess of forty acres in size. That would only be permitted by special exception, and that section also includes additional criteria for consideration from the Board of Appeals as to allow them to make additional findings or facts of finding as to why the request for two piers would be made and why it would be necessary in that instance for the applicant. Moving on from there, another major change that was included within the revision here was moving the private piers within our code from an accessory structure, as many of you probably are aware. Private piers are only permitted as an accessory structure to, say, a residential dwelling or a community pier. In this instance, the applicant's proposing to remove private residential piers from an accessory use to a principal permitted use on a property, which would allow a pier to be constructed on a vacant lot, subject to additional conditions. Some of the additional conditions that they provided within that would be the fact that the lot would need to comply with lot size and with requirements within the zoning district, or that that lot is a legal non-conforming lot of record established today that could at the very least accommodate a minimum of a one thousand square foot dwelling unit. Further on, there's quite a bit of language included in here regarding the reconstruction and reconfiguration of piers that are considered to be non-conforming, whether that is to length requirements, impedance in a side yard setback, a lateral line setback, and a harbor line setback. The language in here provides flexibility for an applicant to reconfigure a pier in a manner, or relocate a pier in a manner that would still be non-conforming to today's regulations, provided they meet additional standards, whether it be the lessening of a non-conforming status in one sense or another, or if they were to propose a reconstruction that would encroach into a side yard property line or a lateral line setback. It requires a property owner to record an agreement between the neighboring property owner saying that they're basically signing off and consenting to that encroachment into their lateral line setback or their side yard property line setback for the proposed relocation or reconstruction of that pier. In the past sense, for recon, or non-conforming piers in the county, you would only be allowed to replace an existing non-conforming pier in kind, which means it would need to be in the same dimensions, the same configuration, and the same location. This affords the ability and flexibility for an applicant to reconfigure that pier in a less non-conforming sense if it can't essentially comply with the full extent of the bulk requirements that we do have. So it would afford an individual that has a unique lot shape or a, a unique area or body of water to reconfigure that pier and still retain usable area of it without completely alleviating all non-conformities if that's not in fact possible in those instances. The, the limitations that we currently have in our code for finger, finger piers related and associated with piers is that they can only be fifty percent of a slip length for a boat. The proposed language here includes the allowance for a finger pier to extend the entire slip length of a boat, and in no case would that be able to exceed forty feet. So forty feet would be the maximum for the proposed slip length of the boat, so whichever the lesser of the two would be in those instances. The clarification and addition of square footage associated with finger piers, platform area, and catwalks associated with boat lifts, currently in the code, that's permitted to be up to a hundred and twenty square feet. The proposed language would increase that to two hundred and forty square feet in this instance, and that would allow for this finger pier areas associated with the boat lift to be longer than that fifty percent in some instances, and allow for additional flexibility for an applicant's configuration of platform area and finger piers associated with those boat lifts. I touched a bit on the modifications and allowances for modifications to the non-conforming piers. There's also the allowance of increasing the non-conformity in those non-conforming piers up to fifteen percent, and that would be subject to a minor variance approval by the planning director. The flexibility in the non-conforming structure section doesn't provide a lot of leeway or allowance for reconfiguration for non-conforming piers, so providing this language is similar to what we have for expansions of other minor non-conforming structures and non-conforming uses that we have and deal with on a landwork basis for similar structures. The other caveat to that is that the proposed expansion or proposed addition or increase of non-conformity would then have to be reviewed and approved by MDE, obviously, for the applicant's proposed configuration. Bear with me, I'm just trying to make sure I don't miss any strong points.
Take your time.
Another inclusion here would be the permitance to allow for additional improvements, whether it be finger piers, catwalks, boat lifts, platform area, in excess of the one hundred and fifty-foot maximum pier length that we currently have in place. Today, we, we have several, I would say, many non-conforming piers within the county that were just constructed before we actually had the hundred and fifty-foot limitation put into place. Many of those piers were constructed because, or configured in a way to exceed that one hundred and fifty-foot limitation because of the tidal water issues and being able to get to a depth suitable to have a boat lift. So we've had several applicants with issues where they have an existing non-conforming pier that does not include a boat lift, and they have not been able to include the improvements associated with a boat lift, be it a platform area or a finger pier, past that one hundred and fifty-foot length where they would get that water depth to be able to accurately utilize that boat lift in the past. This language would afford them the ability to add those improvements on to an existing non-conforming pier in those instances. And then the last portion that I would note here is that there's additional language in the terms defined section that clarifies some language for boat houses and platform area language that excludes the, the main portion of the pier out of your platform calculations. In other words, if you have a six-foot width pier and a platform area on the end of it, that platform area would not count the six-foot section of the pier that extends through it. Those are really the main points of discussion here. Again, I'd be happy to go over all of them more in-depth for you if you have more questions. I know it's a lot of information, but obviously, I'll be here to answer any of those if the applicant would like to come up and present additional information.
Sure. Okay. All right, so we're gonna go ahead and open it up to the public hearing. Like to come on up, yep?
President Callahan, members of the council, Ryan Showalter, again, one hundred Northwest Street, Easton, Maryland. To my right is Christopher Moore with Weems Brothers Construction. I think Mr. Tarleton did a fantastic job of summarizing the, the principal changes in the amendments, and I think it's fair to say that this is, this truly has been going on for, for years. This process started when we had a landowner on the upper portions of the Tredavon River who had a bank slump or, or bank failure, but it was not caused by undercutting of wave action, erosion at the base of the, the slope. So their, their slope, they have a high bank, and, and it was slumping from the top, the bottom was stable, and we were stuck in a position where MDE basically said, we'll permit you to install, you know, shoreline protection, but we weren't losing shoreline, and the Critical Areas Commission said, well, we won't let you put a structure in the buffer, even though what was needed is a structure to stabilize the top of the bank, not the base of the bank. We, we spent probably six months working through that, and ultimately, it took having regulators visit the site and, and observe the conditions leave, and then be called back three months later and see that literally four feet of the, the yard that they observed a couple of months earlier was now eighteen or twenty inches lower than it was when they walked on it previously, to say, you know what, we need to do something. So we ultimately found a regulatory solution that was the right solution, it solved the problem, but the county code really didn't have a way to address it. So this, this, that generated discussions with Mary Kay about a need to have a text amendment to address shoreline stabilization. Conversations about how we would accomplish that identified that the county planning staff had a number of pier-related text amendments that they sort of kept on a notepad and intended to address at some point when text amendment started, and the process sort of continued to evolve through Mary Kay's tenure, through Miguel's tenure, into Brennan's tenure, and ultimately culminated in what's before you, which is a comprehensive set of, of applicant-driven and ta, staff-driven text amendments that Critical Areas Commission has looked at and commented on, the county planning commission has unanimously recommended approval of, and were before you this evening. The, a number of these amendments are really intended to have the Talbot County regulations aligned with MDE's regulations. So finger piers, for example, MDE permits finger piers the length of a slip. Talbot County currently limits them to fifty percent of the length of a slip. And if you're trying to get lines on the bow of a boat or maintain your boat on a finger pier that is tapered and only goes halfway the length of the slip, you understand that it, it's not very safe or functional. So some of these amendments are really just intended to cause county taxpayers to have the same rights that anyone else in the state enjoys. Mr. Tarleton noted at the end of his comments, the, the amendment that would allow people who have piers that exceed a hundred and fifty feet in length to, to put a boat lift on their pier, and, and what he described is entirely correct, I just want to make sure that we don't leave anyone with a misimpression. That does not allow someone to construct a longer pier. If you have a hundred and forty-foot pier, you could build a hundred and fifty feet, you could add ten more feet to your pier, and you could put a lift on it. If you have a two-hundred-foot pier, it doesn't allow you to extend that pier, but it does allow you to hang a boat lift on the side of the pier beyond a hundred and fifty feet from the shoreline. And so you're allowed to utilize the full length of it, but you couldn't orient your lift on the end of the pier so that your pier functionally became longer, couldn't make it more non-conforming, but you could use the non-conforming portion of it. Another material change that, that drove these amendments is we're seeing an increasing awareness and guidance from MDE to minimize impacts to submerged aquatic vegetation, and the main problems with Savs and, and piers arise from shading, number one, and the second is from prop wash. When you put a boat in and out of gear, that, that, the water flow disturbs the bed, stirs up sediment, can even blow, you know, plants out of the sediment or, or cloud them and shade them. And so what MDE likes to see, where possible, is slips or lifts occur in deeper water, where it's deeper than sunlight penetrates. So the shallow waters where you find Savs, once you get beyond a certain depth, you have less vegetation and therefore less impact associated with slips. Where you have folks in the county that have non-conforming piers today, for example, they, they may have three hundred feet of, three hundred square feet of platform area, they're only allowed two hundred square feet. MDE would be happy to see that platform area relocated over deeper water, or see slips reconfigured into deeper water to minimize the impact on that submerged vegetation. Under the current rules, a property owner has the option of, of reducing their environmental footprint and conforming with MDE's wishes, and building a new pier that complies entirely with the code, or replacing it in kind. You don't have the ability to keep essentially what you have, but modify it to be more environmentally sensitive. And so that's, that's another major driver for these amendments. And I think with that, I'll, I'll pause and see if there are specific questions.
I did have specific questions, but you've addressed them, thank you.
Great, yeah, okay. We're good? Okay, okay.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
Okay, anybody else would like to speak on fifteen twenty-eight? All right. Okay, at this time, Madam Secretary, do we want to close the public hearing?
You can.
I can, okay. Out for discussion? You're good? Okay.
Yeah, I, I.
Yeah, you're good.
I, I do want to thank the planning office for, for bringing this to, to a conclusion and, and for all your, all your work on this. I'm, I'm certainly aware of a great variety of, of different pure configurations and non-conformities in various places around the county, and, and dealing with these complexities is, it's, it's nice to, to get some clarity about a way forward with these, and I, I just want to thank you for, for the clear guidance on this.
All right, good. Okay, so we will be scheduled to vote on this, um, April twenty-eighth.
I'm sorry, twenty-fifth, that was my error.
I'll make them all the time. All right, so we'll be, we'll be voting on that April twenty-fifth. Okay. All right, okay, next up, Mr. Stamps up, with County Manager Report.
Good evening, Council.
I liked you.
That's okay.
They all laughed, you know?
I don't take it personally. Thank you, Council. Under County Manager Report this evening, board and committee vacancies requesting the appointment of Mr. Terry Satchel from the University of Maryland Medical System, Shore Regional Health, to the Commission on Aging.
Okay.
I'll move the appointment.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion second to put Mr. Satchel on the Aging Committee.
Commission on Aging, yes.
Commission on Aging, yep.
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Step?
Aye.
Mr. Lusher?
Aye.
Ms. Milky?
Aye.
Ms. Hay?
Aye.
Just an announcement, again, the county has a number of vacancies available on other boards and committees. If you're interested in serving, please contact the County Manager's Office at four one zero seven seven zero eighty-ten, or visit our website at www.talbotcountymd.gov. Vacancies exist on the following: the Adult Public Guardianship Review Board, Agricultural Resolution Board, Animal Control Board, Board of Appeals, Board of Electrical Examiners, Commission on Aging, Historic Preservation Commission, Public Works Advisory Board, Talbot County Local Drug and Alcohol Abuse Council, and the Talbot County Property Tax Assessment Appeals Board. So I wanted to just share that with the public in case we have anyone that wants to volunteer.
Okay, thank you.
The next item I have is a request from the Department of Economic Development and Tourism, asks Cassandra Van Hoosier to come up, the director. They're interested in filing an application for the Maryland Heritage Area Authority Capital Grant for the Frederick Douglass Audio Driving Tour, and she'll provide detail and be able to answer questions.
Good evening, Council. So this is a simple letter of support for an MHAA grant, and I actually, in the preliminary assessment with the Stories of Chesapeake Heritage Area, I got a hundred on my grant. I got a hundred on my grant application, which has never happened to me before, so I was very pleased with that. This is to take our current driving tours, which are featured in this brochure and on our website, and make an audio driving tour out of that. Kenneth Morris, who's the great-great-great-grandson of Frederick Douglass, has agreed to voice this for us. This will be a on-demand service for guides. We don't have very many guides who are doing the Frederick Douglass tours here, and we think this will really enrich the experience. And just to tell you how important it is, I had a lady in today with this brochure. She and her husband had done all four driving tours today, and I said, well, interesting that you should come in today because I'm going to council tonight to ask for a letter of support. And she said, oh, it would have been amazing to hear his voice and hear Frederick Douglass's words being spoken as we drove through the countryside here. She commented on the cultural landscapes here and how special they are, and how different they are from other places. So I think it will be a great asset for us. This is a fifty-thousand-dollar grant request, and this, you can match this. It has to be matched at a hundred percent. You can match it with any combination of in-kind or cash. We have a small amount of cash in the budget for projects like this, but believe we'll be able to match it with Kenneth Morris's generous contribution of his time, which counts toward a match. So that's my request.
Okay, that's great. Okay, with that said, is there a motion?
Mr. Callahan, I will say, I will vote on this here, knowing that I will have to recuse myself of the state body, the MHAA, where I sit. But I think I'm safe doing, given that, I think I'm safe offering the motion to offer this letter of support.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion in second. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Step?
Aye.
Mr. Lisher?
Aye.
Ms. Milky?
Aye.
Ms. Hayes?
Aye.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Good job.
And finally, Council, we're asking Council's approval of a memorandum of understanding that you have in your packet between Caroline County, Kent County, and Talbot County and Delmarva Community Services for the regional transit service. Again, as you read in your packet, I'm requesting Council approval for a second addendum to the memorandum of understanding between Caroline, Kent, and Talbot County and Delmarva Community Services for regional public transit services. The agreement has been renewed by, reviewed by legal counsel for each of the bodies, and they do recommend its passage.
Okay.
I'll move for approval.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion in second for approval. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Step?
Aye.
Mr. Lisher?
Aye.
Ms. Milky?
Aye.
Ms. Hayes?
Aye.
And finally, I do have one more item, and that is asking Council to declare Tuesday, April eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, as a special legislative day. This is for the purpose of introducing the FY twenty-four annual budget ordinance, and if approved, the meeting will begin at six P.M.
Okay.
I'll move for the special legislative day, even though I won't actually be here.
I might not be here either.
Second.
Okay. We got a motion in second for special legislation on April eighteenth. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Step?
Aye.
Mr. Lisher?
Aye.
Ms. Milky?
Aye.
Ms. Hayes?
Aye.
Council, that completes your County Manager Report for this week. Thank you very much.
Yep, thank you. Good job. Okay, so up next is public comment. He's smaller. He's smaller. He's got something for us. Nothing. Okay. Hey, Jess, do we have a list out there?
Uh, no, you didn't.
We didn't? Okay. Anybody here? How you doing, Ms. Rose, tonight? How you? Good. How you doing? Nice seeing you.
Thank you.
All right. Has Carol got something back there? We're good? All right. Are we good back here? All right, then. All right, well, we'll go ahead and close the public comment. And next up is Council comment. Sorry, someone, Mr. Step?
Uh, sure. Just in typical format here, just like to tell you what Council's been up to since our last meeting. You know, a lot of budget stuff. So again, a big, huge thank you to our team sitting here in front of us, as well as our finance team and our departments who have worked with Council here over the last, gosh, at this point, almost, what?
Couple months.
Yeah, for getting this FY twenty-four budget. So sincere thank you to all for all that's going into that. We hope to make the county proud. As far as just some out and about in the community the day after our last meeting, we took our Vietnam proclamation over to the VFW and met with the folks over there. Quite a moving, quite a moving presentation. It's good to hear a lot from the vets and, yeah, very touching stories for sure. And then, yeah, a very productive meeting with the town of Easton over the Easton Point project that they're proposing. So a lot of great things to come in regards to that project as that moves forward. So that's all I have today, and looking forward to celebrating Talbot Day. So thanks to Council, lastly, for passing that. I think we'll see some great things out of our community as that proliferates here. So thank you all.
Great, thank you.
Lisher?
Yep.
Mr. Callahan, I've said plenty. I've nothing further.
Okay.
I just wanted to, David spoke for me about the veterans, Vietnam vets memorial, and it was indeed touching to hear those veterans and their tales, and how fifty years later, how they're still affected by that war. And I was proud to be able to give them that proclamation. I think that they were pleased, too.
Lynn, could you mention the pinning? Just what they did there, too? The pinning event that they had?
Oh, yes, yes. And they offered to pin, give little pins to all the veterans, and it was quite a group. And as you said, the tales and the stories were just heart-wrenching and touching. Interesting. Thank you.
Nothing for me.
Okay. And I just, like Mr. Step said, just appreciate everything you do for us. I know we're coming down to the end of the budget, and you guys done a great job, so we really appreciate it. And we appreciate a man down here, Greg, too. He protected us, you know? So thanks a lot, and I really appreciate the public being out here and you guys from track being here, and just, you know, we'll do the best we can to support you, and we appreciate everything you do for us, okay? We really do. So being that said, Mr. Lisher?
The County Council's next meeting will be held on Tuesday, April eighteenth, beginning at six o'clock P.M., which has been declared a special legislative day. The Council will be convening an open session at five fifteen P.M. and then adjourning into closed session to discuss real estate, legal, and personnel matters, as listed on the statement for closing that meeting. Therefore, is there a motion to adjourn this meeting and reconvene as noted?
So moved.
Second. Okay, we got a motion in second. Madam Secretary?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Step?
Aye.
Mr. Lisher?
Aye.
Ms. Milky?
Um, aye.
Ms. Hayes?
Aye.